I gotta find my agenda. Good evening. Call the mayor and council meeting for October 7th, 2013, your order. Are there any additions or corrections of the minutes of the September 16th meeting?
Move to be accepted.
As presented, and I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You practiced all that, didn't you?
I'm gonna... Don't get me started on you, Mabel.
Why not? I like it. I think it's funny.
If we go to pay him with the bills.
I mean, that we pay the bills as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have several guests here tonight. The first one is Bill Arrowood from the Recreation Commission. And Billy, I want to thank you for Bachi. I have not been out there yet, but I hear it is the success of the town.
It is a huge success so much that I brought t-shirts for everyone. Pick a quarter of your size. If I don't have your size, I have more, so one for everybody.
Extra small?
Extra small. So, Bachi has been a wealth of... We've got tons of people out every night. We've got... The most exciting thing about Bachi is that we've got sixty people using the park every week, and they're interacting in groups they've never interacted before. We've got young folks and old folks and people from different parts of town that are just meeting each other. It's been a huge success, and so we're really proud of that. I'm here tonight to ask for an event that the Recreation Commission would like to put together, and Councilor Gotti, you have a paper in front of you, you can slide those around. We had some folks come to us to ask if we could do a Halloween-based event. Our last movie night is scheduled for the week of Halloween, so we thought we'd do a little more with it. Originally, we were planning on doing it in conjunction with the parade, but the parade was moved to the week after Halloween, so we decided to go forward with our date of October 26th. We're gonna do something called a pumpkin patch. Just something that is sort of middle post farmer's market to get some families downtown and get them involved, have some fun before the holidays. Pumpkin decorating, carving, pumpkin dessert bake contest, some games, an apple cider press. I've stopped in on the historic side, so they're doing ghost stories that day, so we want to cross come up with them. They're doing ghost tours. We are gonna do a movie that night. We're gonna show the great pumpkin first and then show Beetlejuice afterwards. And that's on our schedule of movies with people we've arranged with. Music Life's gonna provide some music. This is all contingent on you guys saying okay. This is stuff that we preliminarily made calls and inquiries about. Would like your permission to set this up. What we'd like to do is do it in Memorial Park, but on the day, we'd like to close that side of park road so we can actually use the streetscape there, so people in that area, there's no cars flowing through it. Set up the putt-putt, pumpkin putt-putt, which we'll do, you know, just like putt-putt golf with pumpkins. We'll do that in the park or in the courthouse lawn, and just stations where just kids have fun and be active in the park, make some families out. Again, because they didn't have their permission, I'll make preliminary calls to Friendship Montessori and the Garden at elementary, Garden at PTASA, and Heaps Garden, and they're all willing to get involved pending your approval. What I would request is that you give us some pumpkin seed money, so that we can go out and buy the pumpkins we need. I think three hundred bucks would probably buy all the pumpkins we could ever want and paint supplies. We'll get the tables and chairs and the paint, all that stuff donated, but we talked to Reddman Farms, and they're willing to work and deal with us. Three hundred bucks for this truckload, and then whatever we decorate, we'll decorate the town for the rest of the week with. We'll put them around, light them up, there's Jack Lance for the parade, things like that. So, the idea is just mostly to try to get more families engaged and to extend the farmer's market day a little longer, keep people downtown a little longer after farmer's market. We'll start around 10:00 a.m., which is about mid-market, and run it till about 3:00, which will hopefully, you know, get people through the lunch rush, that families will stay downtown and eat and do some shopping and do like that. But like I said, originally, we wanted to do after parade, take advantage of that mob of people that are over there, but it did make sense to move it afterwards, because no one decorates pumpkins after Halloween.
After, no. I tell you some of the things I'm just gonna bring up tonight that I would rather us use the money for this, is that we... I think that meter decorating contest has kind of run its course. I think it got a little tired, and then we didn't have as many people participating. And I'd so much rather us do three hundred for you and not do the meter.
Well, I know that the PTA was already excited about decorating.
I think it's wonderful. I think this is something, once again, getting people downtown, family, get some energy, and I can't wait to see.
We can make that a part of this. We can make scarecrow making on the meters a part of this, if you'd like.
Whatever... It doesn't matter. The scarecrow thing, I think, really ran its course. Every year, we're getting less and less participants, and I'd rather do something like this with families and children. I'd love to see the pumpkin bachi, I think. That sounds fabulous. What I would like you to do, once we have a vote, if it votes fine, is get a... When you get your schedule set, give it to Kay so he can put her on constant contact while we're done with the movies. So, folks, do you... We have, first thing, do we give the recommission, permission to use, close the Memorial Park Road area for this community event, and give them $300 for supplies for this event? Is there a motion to approve?
Not entirely. I'd like to ask you a question first. What is it costing us for the scarecrow?
Well, it was about a hundred and seventy-five?
Yes.
It was a hundred and seventy-five.
That's cash for the winners.
The winners. So, we're gonna switch this money, put a little bit more, and let this do this wonderful event, I think, for kids and families.
I do think we'll have... We had less last year, and I think it is kind of needed also.
Yeah.
And this could be a good thing, involving the children.
Family, I think, what fun. Yes, I'm...
Mayor, I do know that the PTA, who is very accurate, they've already contacted me about the Christmas parade and Thanksgiving weekend. They've already planned a meter and are constructing their meter adoption, so if Billy wants to adopt that for this program, I'd be willing to help with sponsorship for the prizes.
If you want to roll us an extra hundred bucks and make it four hundred for cash and prizes and supplies, we'll help run the meter program as well. Because I think it is, even though it's fun, if we roll it all together, we'll make it a lot better.
Okay, Mark?
I just know that they told me the other day about the parade, and they said, "We're doing a meter too," and they're all excited about it.
Okay.
I don't wanna throw a blanket on them.
No, no, we don't wanna throw a blanket on them. So, what do you think, folks? Let's do four hundred for the meters and this wonderful event. Is there a motion?
So, I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Are you gonna use the courthouse ground?
That's a question for you guys, if we have to get additional permission to use the courthouse lawn for the... I was gonna put the courthouse lawn, because it's flat, was the putt-putt, and I assume that depending on your approval, I'll go to the county and ask if we can use their lawn. Is that right, Mr. Russell?
No, close. Yeah, no, really, close.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be out there enjoying bachi pumpkin.
And I won't be in Bachi this week, but you guys should really stop by. We have only two more weeks. Thursday nights down the park. I encourage anyone that's not council, just wants to come out and see their neighbors having a good time, stop down. It's been a huge success, and we're gonna do it again in the spring, so if people are interested, find ways to contact and keep it going.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take things just a little bit out of order, David. Excuse me. I'm gonna take Sultana first, because yours is a little more... So, Drew, you're on.
Moving me up?
Yep.
Thank you.
You all read the letter?
Who?
Excuse me, everybody read their letter? Okay.
Do you want to start out with a question, or are you just waving at me?
Me?
Yeah.
I didn't know I was, but hi.
I'm here following up on the last comment from Sam Dusha, I think it was just the last What I'm interested in seeing tonight is if the town would consider partnering with us to submit a sustainable communities, also known as a community legacy grant, to the state of Maryland to support the education center we are gonna build down at the corner of Cannon and Cross Street. The program is open only to municipalities, so as an individual, private, nonprofit, Sultana Projects can apply, but it is intended for this sort of project. We have... The reason we became alerted to this, which we have been working with the governor's office to see if we can identify some state funds that might be able to use for this project. A vast majority of funding for this project will come from private individual donors and private foundations, but for us to break ground in, say, the next twelve months, it would be very, very helpful to have funding which would come from the state. And we have approached the Department of Planning, that administers the grant program, talked to the people who administer the grant, gone over our project with them, and they have indicated that we line up very favorably with the outlines of the grant. But there's no sense of us moving forward to pursue the grant without, you know, your approval, because we can't do it without your approval.
So, what this is essentially, they can only apply for this through us. We are a sustainable community. They will do all the work on writing the grant, and then it comes through and passes on to them as they have bills for construction, things like that, but the checks get written. So, it really doesn't cost us anything, but it adds to us, because when you look at some of the information from them, they're expecting to have at least fifteen thousand more visitors a year here because of this educational center, and that is an incredible boon for our downtown. So, I was hoping someone would make a motion to approve Sultana Projects going through the sustainable communities.
I'll move.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
That mayor may not be related, but I'd like to know what position Chris Sereno has with your company.
He is vice president of Sultana Projects. He's a boy at the organization.
Oh, he's vice president. Okay. And he's running for office of mayor?
That is correct.
And you're here now asking for the town's good favor?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there a connection?
I just wanna...
Is he trying to make a connection?
I'm making a connection, yes.
I'm not catching it, so perhaps you could be more explicit as to what the connection is.
Well, I think the public should know, just simply because he is running for political office and has position with Sultana, that the public know, be aware, whether it be me or whomever, when we're getting into, not exactly conflict of interest, but pretty close.
You have to do this now, though, right?
Yeah.
Well, yes.
Nobody's married yet. This is actually, we're doing now.
Nobody said he would ever...
You're not actually agreeing to anything tonight. We don't have the numbers here, so...
No, all we have to do is that they can go through and make the application under our sustainable community and community legacy powers. I don't see the complication here.
I'm in favor, and I've already been talked to by a couple of businesses down that area, who are very excited about the fact that...
Oh, we're all excited.
That you're gonna do this, and they feel like it would be a tremendous amount of foot traffic down that way, and they're very happy with it, and when they're happy, I'm happy, so we'll...
I'm gonna go on Mabel's comment. I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
Ask it away.
Okay. There is no financial commitment on the part of the town. There's no town money at this time being requested.
Sultana Projects has never asked for a single dime from the town of Chestertown's budget, nor do we ever intend.
Okay, that's the answer I was looking for, because it's... The access to this, to the program, it has to be through the town, and that's why you're here.
Yes, we cannot apply... It can only be applied for by municipality as a pass through fund. I believe the town did a similar arrangement with the...
We've done with many groups.
Yeah.
We did the family center, we've done plenty of groups. Yeah. It's not a big...
There's no conflict of interest if there is no interest. That's what it amounts to.
Well, I've always backed everything you've brought in.
Then you have. We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
However, I just wanted to know.
You had to get your two sentences.
I sure did. I sure, I did.
Okay, let's call for the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've got some interesting people coming up in a little bit. I don't mean to put you guys off, but you're gonna have a little more complicated... This folks over here, so I wanna... Are you okay? Do you have a long way to travel?
I'm from Calhoun.
Oh, my God.
So...
Ben, you can just sit there. Oh, wait a minute. I recognize him. You have the glasses back on. Okay, the Nancys are up.
The Nancy's.
The Nancy's are up, with a pink can of black paint.
First, I'd like to tell you that the downtown Chestertown Association will be having a candidate forum on the 28th. We now have a date set. It's the Garfield Center between 7:00 and 9:00. And I think it'll be in the newspaper, and we'll advertise it more, but it's for all the candidates for mayor. Unfortunately, there's so many candidates, twelve and all, we've never had enough time for anyone to be there. It's the same on the mayor's race.
Is that a Monday?
That's a Monday night. What, three weeks from now? And then the next, we're coming to ask for your approval for a new project of DCA, through the government, Nancy has. And that is for the alley, which is near the old Rambles store. You'll feature that. Bartley's.
Bartley's Alley, yeah.
Bartley, gentlemen. And Nancy's gonna give you some of the information on that, if you have a few points to pick over and give you a little more information.
So excited.
But generally speaking, it's, you know, the stucco panels that own, in the alley, have always been stucco, unpainted, obvious that they were in those doors that are now present. And so, our project is to trampolines, artifices, those panels, and Nancy will... I'll let Nancy do it. We're also keen with, partnering with River Arts, and unfortunately, Zane Carter is away, he would be here later, so... Thanks, Nancy. I'm gonna read something, and then when I'm finished reading, I'll take any questions you have. On the west side of High Street, just north of the Spring Street intersection, is an alleyway connecting High Street to the Cannon Street parking areas and the businesses. Walking through the alleyways, one sees nine stucco areas. Six on the left side, the south side, which is where the Chestertown Pharmacy is, and there are three on the north side, the old Rambles building, which is now owned by Ray Davis and Tom Burns. These stucco areas were former windows and doors, long ago, closed up. The Towntown Chestertown Association and River Arts, in collaboration, offer a proposal that will create an attractive, inviting, historically appropriate, and fun walkway between Cannon Street and High Street. These stucco areas will be power washed, primed, base coated, and painted, using trampoloi techniques. The plein air artists, who have participated in the Chestertown plein air art event in the spring, will contribute their talents to make this a reality. The subjects will include interiors of some of Chestertown's historic buildings and favorite views around town. One might see scenes from the Getty's Piper House, the White Swan Tavern, the Custom House, the Henson Ringgold House, Washington College, and Whitehall. After the artists have worked their magic, the painted scenes will be window-framed and window-painted artistically. The largest area might actually be viewed through a doorway. This artistry will allow those passing through the walkway to seemingly peek through windows into the past, which is still part of our present. We believe that this is a perfect way to convert an unattractive alleyway into a delightful walkway. Now, the paperwork you have received shows some of the pictures as it is now. There are some photoshopped pictures that Zane Carter has put together of scenes from town that he has window-framed and window-painted. And then there are a few pictures of other things that we might be using in this project. We're gonna present things to the artists, and we'll have them interpret things the way they look up to. The building owners, the shopkeepers, and those who have been involved in these planning discussions are very enthusiastic and eager to see this project come to fruition. The Historical Society has been very supportive and is voting yes for this. They've been wonderful. If you have any questions about this, if you know what I'm gonna be...
The building's owned by Mr. Tenelli, is that right?
No.
The Chestertown Pharmacy is owned by Mr. Tenelli. He has given us permission.
And he's in favor of you painting on his...
Yes. We don't have to do anything unless we have written permission from everyone, not just the building owners, but also from any scenes that we use. We're gonna be putting on a tag of some kind of what building it is, that the scene has come from, so that when people then walk around town, they'll see the White Swan, they'll go see Whitehall or whatever. To bring the college into it, we have George. We have a... plein air has a very, very good portrait painter who probably asked for it to do George. And by the way, it's not actually glass. It will be artistically looked as though there's glass, but there won't be glass on it. We're also aware that we're running a little bit of a risk, because these are really paintings. I mean, these are done by individual artists, and we've won the rest of maybe Tom and Ray wanted to open one of the windows, and so one of these got found. The artists are aware of it. It just seems like resting is not our way, but the advantages of building.
Fabulous, fabulous. The first time I saw this in Maryland, I was up in Frederick, and I was walking... I told Nancy the story, I was walking down the street, and it felt like someone was looking at me, and that wonderful man looking out the window. And it was trampolaya, and I just thought, oh, my word. I wanted this so badly, and Leslie Raymond and I have talked about this for years, we just never got to it, and you're getting to it, and it is so exciting.
Well, we hope it will be...
So exciting.
We hope also we need to have through a window, maybe out of the window of Whitehall or something, and then be able to get the Sultana in it, because Sultana's becoming so incredibly important.
A piece of this place.
Yeah. And I... Just more on here, I guess, and Sultana just was gone.
That's gone.
We had a... Our companies have a very long lease at the Kent Printing. We could have just said no, I'm sorry that we're not leaving, but I have... Phil and I talked about it, and it's truly that, I think if you're really fortunate in life, you're given an opportunity to be bigger than yourself, and this is the opportunity. If you're lucky, you only maybe get one chance, and to be much larger than we are, because if you think about what... Well, this is gonna be a side subject, but I'm so passionate about Sultana and our arts organizations. If you think of what they've done behind the bushes on Cross Street, imagine where they're gonna have a lead platinum building, that people will come just to see the building that'll end Sultana, so I'm very excited about it.
Leslie, these are all... These are just life-changing things, and we get to be part of them and see them, which is great. Now, do you need... You don't need permissions from us, just kind of our nod.
No, Historical District Commission has approved it. What I would love to have is your support. I would like to see if we could have the town have these panels power washed. I don't know if Larry and the boys have a power washer.
Can they take care of that?
Yep.
But that would be terrific. And there's a little bit of graffiti there that has to go. And one of the issues is also lighting. That alleyway is pretty dark.
Oh, it is, isn't it? Yeah.
And for safety purposes, especially with the new businesses going in up there, we would like to see better nighttime lighting, and we'd also like to work with making it sort of appropriate for what we're doing.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
So, maybe we can have a conversation about that. I'll tell you what our... The vision is, because the new owners of buildings and their plans on what they're gonna do on the backside, the rear side of the buildings also, eventually, I think in terms of that not being a backdoor parking lot, I see it as a gateway, because everyone from elsewhere comes there and parks, and right now, it's not...
Not the best-looking thing. No, I think some appropriate lighting...
So, if we all mind together, we can make it better.
Well, you know, you work so well with Bill, and he adores you, because he doesn't dare say a word.
No, actually, we have that solved. The lighting kit, the best place for lighting is on either building, and we've already helped the one owner to the west at a sewer leak, and we've...
Wait, left or right?
Towards Rock Hall.
Okay.
The Bartley Building, whatever. And so, we did several hundred dollars worth of putting the brick back and the bollards back where they had a sewer break, so I think if we were to put a light on the side of their building that we paid for and they maintained, that would be theirs after that. I think it'd be great.
I'd like to see it for safety purposes, but also in some way to highlight the art of it.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely. It's a tweener. We have streetlight, and we have a backlight, but we don't have anything in the middle.
Right.
Thank you.
It's pretty dark.
You think it's unattractive now, you should have looked at it thirty-five years ago. It was just a...
Just an alley.
A really crummy-looking alley.
Well, I didn't... At the HTC, someone spoke up and said, "You know, I know that alley so well, because when we had driver's ed, we had to drive through the alley." And that person was an older person, and my father was ages ago. I just went to another meeting, and Jen from the tourism was there, and she's... How old, Jen? In her twenties, maybe? Thirties?
In fact, thirty.
Said that she had to do the same thing through the alley.
Oh, I remember. Yeah, we all remember when the alley was just... People drove through it. Terrifying thought.
That's how you turned around.
And they talked about it being the library. I don't remember that building being the library.
The library, the second location, the public library.
Public libraries up there, yeah.
Near where the Christian...
Because we had to carry the books up the street from that library to... So, our blessing, everybody?
You're creating a historic time tunnel. I can't help but think of that.
You know, the first time...
Did you? The first is second.
TV series time tunnel.
I did a second.
Well, this is because of the alley, and because it's highlighting all the older buildings in time through Chestertown, that, you know, it's gonna be our time tunnel. And it might be the hook that we can get people to go through it.
Well, I'd love to see it with a catchy name. Maybe with new other alleys, yes.
Yeah, because it's a... This one picture really grabs you, these two here. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
As always. Okay, we have some other guests tonight that I lived down on Calhoun Street. Philip Schenk and Allison Farmer.
No Philip.
I'm obviously not Philip. I'm only him.
Get your glasses changed.
Yeah.
See, I look... Who's this guy here? Who are you, with the green tie?
That's Glenn Warren. He's here for a whole different...
You gotta remember him.
He's here about cams.
Oh, of course. Jesus. Oh. Oh, man. Well, I do need new glasses. This cataract over here is making me crazy. Sorry.
Philip Schenk is the navigator for Kent County with the Maryland Health Connection, and Allison Farmer is the assister. And each county has a navigator and assister, and I'm the lead navigator for Kent, Queen Anne's, Talbot, Caroline, and Dorchester. So, I'm filling in, and like I said earlier, I live right here, so it's convenient for me to stop in. We had a PowerPoint, but we have a PowerPoint. I don't wanna get too in the lead with Maryland Health Connection, but we can kind of go of go through pretty quickly and then if you have questions, we're just here to do an overview. Today's goals are the importance of health coverage, what is Maryland Health Connection, the new coverage options, qualified health plans, the Medicaid expansion, affordability options and financial assistance, new premium tax credits, reduced cost sharing, in-person assistance and the resources available. And the importance of coverage, health coverage is important to you and your family. It matters because if something comes up and none of us plan or hope to get sick, you have it. It gives you the peace of mind. I've been comparing it a lot to car insurance. If we have a driver's license, we're legally supposed to have car insurance. Well, I don't just go get car insurance when I think I'm going to have a bad month of driving. We're always going to have car insurance and hopefully never get in an accident. The same way with healthcare, you want to have health insurance, hopefully you never get sick and you don't have any major illnesses. But if you do, it's there to cover you. And medical bills are one of the US leading causes of bankruptcy. Health insurance equals better access to care. People that don't have health coverage are more likely to skip out on medical care. They don't go to the doctors, they don't get their prescriptions billed. They may have trouble paying the medical bills and have to deal with collection agencies. People who do have health coverage are more likely to do the preventative care, go to the doctor. If they feel something coming on, they'll just go. If someone doesn't have coverage, they're just going to try to maybe over the counter medicine and make it through without it. We had a video at six minutes, I don't know if you want me to go through it. It kind of does a cute little overview of the Affordable Care Act. I can.
Listen, I would be allowed to see it. Folks, are you awake?
No, I'm squinting because I don't wear glasses. I.
It's from the Kaiser Family Foundation and it does a nice little overview.
That's perfect then. Can you, James, can you see it at all?
We have to turn that and I could, give me a second, probably.
I'll let you turn it because I don't want to.
Did you try?
No. I didn't even want to attempt to.
Did you crash on Monday?
Did I?
Can you, can the camera see?
Well, you're a facilitator, right?
Yeah, the system was not working.
Yeah, a lot of states, they just, they just blew up, they had too many people trying to call.
Maryland was one of those. We couldn't get into the system.
James, do you have a pretty good angle on it? It'll work. Because if you don't, I'd turn it back this way. But we haven't, the audience look rapt. They really, they can't wait for the images.
Is this too loud or is that?
No, 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 no.
Well, it's finally happening after years of drama on Capitol Hill. A Supreme Court case, a presidential election, and a Mayan apocalypse that could have stopped it dead in its tracks but didn't. The marquee elements of the Affordable Care Act, sometimes called Obamacare, are about to kick in. And big changes are coming to health insurance in 2014. In the next few minutes, you'll get a pretty good lay of the land by once again watching your fellow Americans, the Utoons, find their lay through the system. There are four main ways nearly all of us will experience healthcare once the health reform law goes fully into effect. About half of us will get insurance through our jobs, just like today. About a third will get covered by the government through Medicare and Medicaid. About one in 10 will buy insurance themselves. And unfortunate, 30 million of us or so, just under one in 10, still may not have coverage at all. But let's begin in the workplace. Many Americans are already covered by their employers and for them, not a whole lot will change. There will be some new advantages though, like caps on how much you have to pay out of pocket and free preventative care. The bigger changes are coming for those who work for larger companies but aren't covered now. That's because the government is going to require companies with 50 or more employees to cover full-time workers or pay a penalty. So more workers may find themselves covered. Smaller employers won't face the same penalties for refusing to buy insurance, but they'll be encouraged to do so. The government will be setting up special marketplaces to make it easier for small employers to take the plunge. Some will be offered temporary tax breaks if they do. And unlike now, insurers can't inflate prices if some employees are sick. So many of us will be getting covered at work. A lot of us will be covered with help from the government, just like today. Not much will change for seniors on Medicare. The law has already started helping with prescription drugs and better preventative care and that will continue. Medicaid, on the other hand, is expanding to cover more of us, especially poor adults, many of whom aren't eligible today. If your income is low, Medicaid will cover you, most likely in a private insurance plan. But there's a catch. The Supreme Court ruled that governors and legislatures of each state should decide whether or not to be part of expanding Medicaid. In states that get on board, the feds will cover almost all the cost. But for those who don't, you may be left with the same options you have today if you're poor. So you'll want to check out your state's decision if you think you might qualify for Medicaid. Even with employer coverage and the expansion of Medicaid, a lot of us will still be left out. For those not covered or who find their work coverage too expensive, a new way to buy insurance on our own will be popping up everywhere. They're called health insurance marketplaces, though they may have a fancier name than that in your state. The health insurance marketplace is like a virtual insurance mega mall. Here you'll find private insurers competing for your business and you'll be able to pick out how much coverage you want and how much you want to pay for it. From cheaper, high deductible bronze plans to more expensive platinum plans. Still, all plans will cover a comprehensive set of services like hospital and doctor visits, maternity care, mental health care and drugs, most everything any of us need, at least when it comes to medical care. As with Medicaid, not all governors are on board to set up these marketplaces, but the feds will open their own in those states and so you probably won't notice much of the difference. One big advantage of buying insurance through these new marketplaces is that the federal government will provide most people with a tax credit to make insurance more affordable if you don't have any other options and your income is below a certain level. In fact, most people buying on their own will be eligible for a tax credit and won't have to pay the whole premium themselves. And the marketplaces will make sure that insurance companies operate fairly under strict rules. They'll have to offer everyone insurance even if they're sick, but they won't be able to charge more for pre-existing conditions. Unlike today, men and women will pay the same price. And prices for older people will come down, while young people will pay more. To keep costs down for young people though, they'll be able to stay on their parents' plans until 26 and buy low-budget catastrophic plans until they're 30. Of course, all these changes still don't mean insurance will come cheap. Most people buying their own coverage will end up paying less with the new health insurance tax credits, but some people will have to pay more, even though many of them will be getting better and more secure insurance. So let's be realistic, not everyone's going to run out and buy insurance. Some might say, hold on a minute, if I can't be turned down or charged more, why not just wait until I get sick or injured to buy insurance at all? Well, first, you can only get coverage during special enrollment periods, so if you snooze, you may lose. And second, thanks to something called the individual mandate, if you're not insured, you pay a fine, making this option seem not nearly so clever. Still, if you really can't afford to buy in and can't get insurance anywhere else, the government will waive the penalty. So don't panic. By now, you've probably noticed a lot more people will be getting a lot more coverage. Where will the money to pay for that come from? Taxes, many of them targeted at the health industry itself, even tanning services. Yes, individuals will pay too, mostly the wealthiest Americans who will be paying more into Medicare. Also hospitals and insurance companies participating in Medicare will get paid somewhat less. Not painless, but somebody's got to pay. So as Americans prepare for 2014, how will you be covered? How would you like to be? Now's the time to figure it out and get on the path to setting yourself up for the best insurance at the best price. After all, who wouldn't want that?
Is there going to be a test?
I remember it all.
That tanning thing, that, that, two more times through the tanning booth before it's taxed.
Well, no, that's, but it's dangerous to go there anyway.
Okay.
That was, that was excellent.
Oh, thanks. I didn't think that. The President Family Foundation did and I thought it, I've been using it because I feel like it's a great, like in layman's terms, what the Affordable Care Act is. Trying to mix that in. So specifically, Maryland Health Connection is our name for our portion of the Affordable Care Act. That's anyone who's getting the Affordable Care Act has to go through Maryland Health Connection if they're lawfully residing in Maryland. The new marketplace is exactly how they said. You enter your information, you enter your household size, your income, this is all based on your taxes. So household is who you're claiming on your taxes or who's claiming you on your taxes. Income is what your taxable income is. And then it's going to pop out all these solutions to, from a bronze plan, that's going to be the lowest cost, to a platinum plan, that's going to be more expensive, but it's going to have more bells and whistles. And you choose what's best for you and your family. As if people who work as a satellite with the state, we don't steer anyone towards any particular plan. We just show them their options and put it in their hands to decide. Open enrollment started October 1st and it will go till March 31st for what the qualified health plans. If you're a Medicaid eligible person, there is no end to open enrollment. That goes on from now until forever. They can do it online, they can, they can go by phone, they can do it by mail and they can also meet with a navigator or assister to enroll. And after you complete the process, it's going to tell you what you're eligible for. So we're getting a lot of questions like, my family is this, my income is this. I really, it's best for us to just put it in the system and see what the system says because we're not tax experts or are we insurance experts? We just know the ins and outs of the Maryland Health Connection. So the qualified health plan had to be, to be in Maryland Health Connection, it had to be a licensed, good stand, in good standing with the state of Maryland. It had to cover the 10 essential health benefits. All the plans, including Medicaid, have to have the 10 essential health benefits. And that's where there was a prescription, preventative care, your hospital visits, laboratory tests, anything that's just, should be normally included. And they have to agree to the same premium rate through Maryland Health Connection as they would in the open market. And these are the 10 essential health benefits, maternizing newborn, pediatric services, rehabilitated and health and substance abuse, emergency services. So all of those are in every single plan, whether it's the lowest cost or the most expensive. And then the Medicaid got expanded to 138% of the federal poverty level, which equates to this 15,856 for a household size of one, 32,499 for a household size of four. Anyone who's currently enrolled in the primary adult care or what we hear around here is the PAC program is automatically going to enroll over into the Medicaid expansion on January 1st and they don't have to do anything. So their social services are quickly trying to enroll as many people as they can because those people are just going to roll right over. They're not going to have to go through the website and they're going to get a lot more services. They currently don't have the ability to see a specialist.
It doesn't cover hospital stays. The PAC program right now is a standard, doesn't cover hospital stays, it only covers going to the doctors and prescription, it covers very minimal. And now the new Medicaid program that's that expansion, it covers all the same essential benefits. It's going to cover down with vision care every two years. Minimal dental, but mainly everything like covering hospital stays, it's covering a lot more than what it did under the old system.
And youths that have aged out of foster care are eligible for Medicaid up to 26 now and it doesn't matter what therapy home is. So if they aged out of foster care and they're up to 26, they're eligible for Medicaid.
Because the old system foster care children were automatically kicked out of the system at 19 years old and a lot of them didn't have insurance. So now they are allowing them to go in until 26.
And things that aren't changing, children in families with incomes below 300% of the federal poverty level will still qualify for Maryland Children's Health Program or what we hear is MCHIP. And MCHIP premium will still charge families a premium if they're between 200 and 300% of the federal poverty level. Pregnant women are still eligible for Medicaid up to 250% of the federal poverty level. Nothing is changing with Medicare. We're getting a ton of questions about Medicare. If you have Medicare, you have insurance, you don't need to buy anything, nothing's changing. So that's a portion that is not touched at all, long-term care. This is basically, folks, you're seeing on getting the uninsured insured. The financial assistance, they hit on in the video. There's two different tax credits. One's called an advanced premium tax credit that goes up to 400% of the federal poverty level, which is up to $45,000 and some odd for a single household of one. So that's where they're saying most people are going to apply or be eligible for a tax credit. That's a pretty nice, going up to a pretty nice level, 45,000. You're still going to be eligible for a tax credit that can apply right to your premium at that time. So when you see your plans, you'll see the tax credit, you can take it all and apply it to your premium each month and it's going to go right to your insurance carrier. So you're not going to get it and have to worry about sending it on. You can take a portion of it or you can not take it at all. The reason you would not take it at all is if you felt like you were going to make more income in 2013 versus 2012, then if you did make more and they gave you a bigger tax credit than you deserve, they're going to ask for it back when you go to do your taxes. So that's up to the consumer, what they want to do with the tax credit. It's based on a sliding scale. Then there's also the other tax credit, is called a cost sharing reduction. This is for families or individuals below or up to 250%. And that covers copays, co-insurance, not the premium, but the other expenses and you have to take that. So you don't have an option of taking part of that. That will be applied right to your, lower your copayments when you go to the doctor, lower your co-insurance. There's a lot of different ways to get help with the new insurance. There's only one website where you can enroll. So we're hearing a lot about scams, people calling on the phone and telling people, I can enroll you. Unless you're working with an insurance broker that you know, no one should be calling you on the phone, nobody from the government is going to be calling you and trying to enroll you over the phone. You can go online, you can reach out, unless you reached out to someone and asked for them to call you back, they're not going to be emailing you or calling you unless you know them personally.
That's good information.
Yeah.
And that, this is an opportunity, you're hearing, this is a great opportunity for scam artists to.
Sure.
Take advantage, sending people emails or calling them saying, hey, I can enroll you. We're also hearing that people are charging to enroll, assist people in enrollment. It's free. If you go online or if you meet with one of us or even if you meet with your insurance broker, nobody should be charging you to assist you to enroll.
And all the workers that work with Maryland Health Connections, when you meet with one of us, we have a letter from Maryland Health Connections. It's got approvals that were certified, we have identification that we show. And they suggest that if you're going to get someone help, you ask them to show you the certified letter of first date. And we have certifications that we carry with us at all times for proof that we are legally who we say we are to help the public.
And then these are just insurance terms. I get a great insight, insurance is really complicated. I was on a phone panel with WPOC on October 1st and we had so many, so many people calling in, I couldn't answer, all the phone lines were lit up. People don't know what their, a premium is. It's a monthly payment. They don't know what a copayment is, even though, you know, they go to the doctor and hand them $20. The deductible doesn't, there's so many terms. I had a lot of people calling saying, I, well, I have Medicare, but I don't have health insurance. Well, that is your health insurance. But there's a lot of terms and just getting the information out there so people are better educated is what we're trying to do. And then these are the websites. Anything that ends in .gov is usually, so Maryland Health Connection, Maryland Health Benefit Exchange, healthreform.maryland.gov, those are all reliable sources.
So no one can come in and put a .gov behind something? It has to be, you know that's legitimate?
Right. So that's a way for consumers to know it's a reliable source. And like I said, this is the, marylandhealthconnection.gov is the only website you can enroll in the Maryland Health Connection. There's no other site.
Excuse me a minute. What do you do as an alternative for people who do not use a computer?
You, there's a toll-free number you can call and they'll enroll you over the phone or you can meet with a navigator or assister and they, you can just verbally tell them.
All right, now how does, how does a person get the toll-free phone number?
I have that information right here. We miss.
Okay, that's, that's all good. That's all good for me, but how about the public?
The public, we have a public calendar that is out, sorry.
Ross, we're trying to do as much outreach.
We've been doing outreach with the Health Department and.
I don't, I mean, you want to come to here.
Having any internet access at all.
When Allison came in here, I said, why don't you come to one of our meetings? They have in a bus that comes to, to the square.
I saw the governor's bus, the gov bus come through town today. Light bus.
The Maryland Health Connection bus, we got permission from Mr. Inglefield, will be coming to Fountain Park on October 28th from 11 to 5. And it was going to be an outreach promotion, give a.
Excellent.
And where will it be?
At the Fountain Park on.
Right where, right where the MBA bus.
Okay.
Same place, right?
And the gentleman, he put it in the newspaper last week.
Uh huh, okay.
So we're trying, we're putting in the local newspapers as much as we can. I know Allison and Phil are at Social Services, the Health Department, Shared Opportunities, the Community Center, trying to get around to where whatever's comfortable for.
Well, like the public library has a lot of computers up there and people are using all, so that's another source.
They're at the library.
Library, fantastic, good job.
So trying to get around to as many different places to touch as many different people as we can.
Can I ask you something? Now, are you basically a mobile unit or are you going to have an office somewhere?
I personally don't have an office.
So.
Our, our home base is considered on the second floor in the Kent County Health Department. But we are in each of those locations that we just stated because the goal is for us to meet the public any ways necessary. So if someone was to call, they really didn't have transportation and they needed us to come to Rock Hall and it's a safe, secure place because we have laptops and the. come to call, and it's a safe, secure place, because we have laptops and the, the jack box that we use. If we feel comfortable going to that person's house, if it's safe, we are allowed to go there. It's, we're supposed to meet you on your phones and your hours within reason. But most of the people so far we've come in contact with have been coming to us, so, but we let them know. We make our comments around what is convenient for them, because the community center is going to extend hours to us in November first in the evening, because we have a lot of people at work that need help, but they can't meet the hours of DSS and the Health Department and library. So we have a lot of agents that are going to work with us, and so we can meet people in private, it's a pure confidential process, because we must always stay and become light at all times.
Right.
And I have another question, because our hospital doesn't have maternity and obstetrics. If somebody wanted to go to Christiana, Delaware, how do you advise that person?
We're able to, the nice thing about the Maryland Health Connection is, like they were saying, you can compare plans. You can find, search for your doctor, and some of those doctors will be out of the state of Maryland. So you can look up your OB-GYN, or your doctor that might be at Christiana, and make sure that's in. You can also get prescriptions, if you have certain drugs that you take monthly and want to make sure they're covered. You can look all that up before you choose a plan. And there are going to be providers outside of Maryland that are in-network.
Okay. And the last question is, what's the card gonna look like? I, I worked with Medicaid for many, many years, and each, each program that they have has a different card, either red and white, gray and white, yellow and white.
Originally.
So what are your cards gonna look like, so that they know you're their official?
Like myself, I do the basically Medicaid, and Phil does basically the QHP, but he can do both. So originally, when you first enroll in Medicaid, you will still get the red and white card that you used to get, and then you pick which MCO you want, whether it's private, United Healthcare. They have like ten MCOs that you pick. But before you pick, you can also browse like you would with a QHP, and see which one that your doctor participates with.
So when you get your card, it'll have your MCO on?
Yeah, it's gonna, it could say Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I don't think you're gonna be able to tell Blue Cross Blue Shield outside of Maryland Health Connection from one that's inside. Still gonna be, there's private insurance companies in Maryland Health Connection. So it's gonna be whichever plan you've chosen, that's what's, it's gonna say on your card. It could be United Healthcare, it could be Aetna, it could be many things.
Okay. Any other questions? Up and out there. We'll be all safe and secure. Good. Learned a lot.
Thank you for that.
We have to learn a lot. The main thing we did learn, not to get all bases, for a lot of the people, we understand why some of them don't have insurance, was two scenarios that we mainly have come in contact with so far. They were just recently declared disabled because of the disability amount they get. If they don't qualify for the Medicaid guidelines now, they're being allowed to have insurance for two years. They can't get Medicare for two years.
Medicare?
Yes. Because when you, when you're disabled, after two years, you go into the Medicare program. So a lot of people we've come in contact with are disabled, but their disability amount they get, or they, they come too high for the Medicaid program they have now, and so they were without insurance, and so Medicare kicked in, and it's a two-year penalty. And then another scenario we met, it was family, like married couples. One person is getting ready to go into Medicare, and they're on their husband's wife's plan, and they don't have, and they need assistance.
So is the private insurance still primary in that case?
Well, the one person that's going to Medicare, and the other person can go on the marketplace, and what they qualify for, for most part, is the QHP for them.
But right now, if one spouse is working and has private insurance, that private insurance is primary over Medicare?
Yes, but we have noticed a lot, we've had phone calls from a lot of people, that some of them that have employee-based insurance now, have said because of this new marketplace, they're not gonna cover their spouses anymore. They recommend their spouses go on the website and look for insurance.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Do a business report.
Okay, um, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes.
This was really nice.
Did you do that?
Yeah.
Was there a line somewhere?
The, back to the ordinances that we talked about the last meeting, try, try this again. The, I think I'll do it in reverse order, the sign ordinance, every, I mean, the brush ordinance, everybody get a copy of that. We, I changed some of the wording, because our original wording had all invasive plants prohibited, and there are quite a lot of invasive plants that are technically invasive that people plant, and they have no idea that dink or periwinkle, or Swedish ivy, or whatever. So I changed it to say further, because we're really, it's grass and weeds that we're after. Further, the owner or agent of any lot, place, or area within the town shall keep said property free from weeds, noxious plants, or grass growth in excess of eight inches. That's it. And that's, that's for the judge, when the judge says, okay, why, why do you call that tall grass? And before, we had on vacant lots, but you know, half the problems aren't on vacant lots in town. They're on lots that have a house on them. They're on, where a neighbor is neglecting to mow their grass, is gone, or bankrupt, or whatever. And it's, it's where a lot of the problems are. So this is kind of like a no-brainer, something that the judge asked for. I think it's pretty self-evident when grass is high, but, because we get complaints, you know, we get complaints, and that's probably our best source of information about tall grass. But it is, it's pretty, it's pretty mad when it's your name.
I want to know how it's gonna be enforced.
I, I promise you what I said before, we're gonna stick a rule in the ground.
No, I don't want, I don't want, talking about measure.
Yeah.
I want to know the steps that it, that it's gonna be enforced. Do you call the person first?
We have.
Give them thirty days? Give them a letter?
We generally call them, and, and what you'll get is, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna do it, or, I meant to do it, yeah, I'm gonna do it. So that, that happens, but what happens is that sometimes that route leads people to tell you they're gonna do it, they do it, and then they stop doing it. So we also write a letter, this is just local, this is policy, it's not all fleshed out in here. We write a letter and say, okay, this, we're gonna write you this letter once, if you don't keep it mowed, from this point on, we'll have the right to have it mowed at your expense. And we often do it that way, and also have the right to, to fine people who chronically don't do it, we'll take them to court over that fine. Because most often, when we do fine, they go right to district court and say, I didn't do that.
Does the town have the capability right now, that they have the equipment to cut, you know exactly where I'm talking about, it's, it hasn't been cut all summer. If you can't get a lawn service to go in there and cut that lot, does the town have the equipment to go in and cut it?
We have the equipment and the authority, but, I mean, that's, that's the last resort. We do do that, and we do it with heavier equipment.
Within how many days?
If all other things don't work, we'll do it as soon as possible.
Okay.
Is, yeah.
Okay.
That, the, the things that, we're, we're authorized to put unpaid bills on, on the tax rolls, and that are, that is kind of our last resort. We'll, we'll sometimes mow a parcel that's gotten away from people, because we have like a bush hog mower, and then they'll promise to take care of it from that time on. I would say we have three or four dozen lots a year that stay chronically hard since one of the case's main jobs, and this was sort of a surprise to him in court. We, and anytime you have a problem in your board, please just call us and say, this high grass has continued, you tried all your tricks. So I think we ought to charge a lot more. When we roll equipment in there and mow it, it shouldn't be cheap, and it, it really isn't. It's gotta cover costs. But I would rather, I would rather have local businesses prosper by mowing the grass on a regular basis, when we get that happen, and put it on the tax bills. But if you have an emergency and you want grass mowed, just let me know.
Well, couldn't we contract with a, you know, for the whole year, with several of these guys? So a phone call says, we have a complaint at five eighteen, and then he, he says it's gonna cost X dollars to.
We, we usually get a guy, a cooperative person will say, hey, I, I'm, I'm here in Alexandria, can, can you recommend a service? So we recommend a bunch. They'd pick one, and hopefully, that's a, that's a local job for somebody.
I was saying, instead of town crew going out there?
That's the last resort. It really is. We can't.
Okay, uh, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
This is to pass it. This is to enact it.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Bay Area, when a person puts part of their property either, either to a bird, you know, selection area, or a Bay Area grass, is there any recognition that they're setting aside part of their property to, for natural habitat? I mean, you know, if you look at the Bay.
Mowing the edges as opposed to in the interior and letting it go to sea for the birds?
For the birds. And, and then for, you know, if you look at the Chesapeake Bay Preservation, they're, they're promoting this on large, you know, half-acre lots and stuff. I, I don't have a solution, I'm just asking a question.
No.
I, I think we know, I think we know the difference. If somebody has, has a program, and that's gonna be their natural habitat, I would recommend that they contact the town, just tell us what they're doing.
Okay, that, that stays.
And we'll put it on record. Otherwise, if you drive down the streets of town, you might see one.
Well, I, I know that the, the bird groups offer plaques for you to stick on your grass.
No, we just get some other.
I would recommend that.
No, 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 we wouldn't do it, they would do it, okay?
But they want.
Just as long as we have a mechanism to accommodate.
Sure.
So what do you need for this?
There's a motion to approve, uh, where are we? We're adopting ordinance eight, twenty thirteen, chapter fifty-four, brush, grass, and weeds.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's go back to the signed ordinance.
Yeah, let's go back to the signed ordinance. The signed ordinance, last time we tried to, let's see, what were we trying to do? We were trying to pass it.
Pass the one that grandfathered the marquee in.
The recommendation was made to take it back to the planning commission, which we did. The planning commission's basically said, we looked, we looked at this, in fact, we drafted it, we, we were fine with it then, and if you want us to do more, send a formal, you know, resolution on it. So they pretty much said if they liked it when they drafted it, they still like it now.
Okay, is there a motion to approve signed ordinance amendment to chapter ten signs that we've all discussed concerning the marquee at the Garfield? Some of them. You're second on this. Second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. I, I, as long as the planning commission has looked at it, they say the same thing.
Okay, all of them.
I thought we made changes to it.
No, 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 we were just taking that one piece out.
The marquee portion.
The marquee portion out, that's all we're doing.
Three signs.
Just the one thing. And we need to prove that, and that cleans it up.
It's the definition of marquee in three signs.
Okay, is there was a second on that?
He's second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done.
That's real, that's real progress, okay. Is there something else here that?
Uh, well, we know about the Halloween parade that's gonna be on Saturday, that's second of November, and one of the interesting things, I had a conversation with.
A lion?
No, no, no. No, Bob Nepp.
Bobby Nepp.
Bobby Nepp. Head lion. And one of the things that was interesting, I think they're interested, we have all wanted that parade at night, go back to the nighttime, somehow the daytime just doesn't have the flavor. So I'd like people to send us a note, and say they would like this, or email us that we would like to go back to the nighttime Halloween parade, and I think they're interested maybe in considering that, so let me know.
You mean like Halloween night?
Yeah, well, yeah, Halloween night. We used to go out, kids came home, we gave them a hot dog.
I don't think the chief of police would be happy to have a party at nighttime.
No.
We don't, he didn't have any problems.
There was a lot more mischief goes on at nighttime with that parade.
Oh, but it's, it's so much magical for the little kids.
Yeah, and there's so many more eggs and.
Freddy Krueger going around.
Yeah, Freddy Krueger.
Accent.
Hey, listen.
February, the season one is Friday.
Saturday the second, at ten o'clock.
At ten AM. November second.
Halloween weekend?
Yeah.
Yes. Talked to, I talked to the Saltona about it, they.
They had no problem.
They said they were not wild about it, but they certainly did not want to stand in the way of the Lions Club and.
It should have been, well, we have a penny, it's after Halloween, but.
Friday's Veterans Day, it's first Friday. It's downriggy.
Downriggy.
And people say there's nothing going on in Chester.
No, that makes me crazy when they say, nothing to do here.
We'd say it last Friday.
Halloween three, fireworks on Saturday night.
It's hot, it's a hopping town.
It's a hopping. Such my daughter came down from New York, went in, I said, honey, Chestnut is jumping. She went.
I don't have this on my written agenda, but we did get a one hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred and six dollar Maryland Bike Ways program grant for the phase three of our rail trail, which is really exciting, and I want to remind you that we kept talking to these people, because they gave us ninety thousand dollars as part of the fees for the phase one and two, and we kept talking with them, and talking, and sending, I sent Case to some of their seminar, you know, their hearings, and, and then we found out that we were, that the deadline was over, remember this in June?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I called them up and said.
We didn't, not get a notice.
Talking to you, and send us the forms, so they let us, they let us in, and then they funded it. So this, this is a happy ending.
Okay, now where is the rest of this trail going?
Phase three goes behind the backside of High Street, all the way down to Brooks's Tap, and it links up with the Gateway Park, which we had.
That's what we bought.
We had a great bid opening today.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday. I should bring that in. The low bidder for that was right in line with our budget, the RFP for engineering. We had two other grants, I said, we got a thirty-two thousand dollar grant for trees that, that's from Stormwater Program, and we're gonna get the help of the Tree Committee and planning on where that goes at Roland Road Park, that's what it was asked for, for. And the twenty-five thousand dollar grant that, for the art, what's the name of that? The NEA.
NEA grant.
That's three grants in sort of an off-grant season, so that's really terrific.
You did a good job.
Very good.
Exciting times.
I'm gonna, I'll be back in a second, I wanna go get the.
I'll do my little things about the appointments. Okay, we need to appoint Pam Duke Escor as attorney for the Ethics Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And appoint Kathleen Jones to the Ethics Commission. You have her piece of information, which I think you all know her. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And it is with regret that we have to, I mean, I'm really gonna mess it, Megan Sedensky, they, her family's relocating to Amherst. Not a bad place to get a job, so we wish her the very best. She'll be leaving near the end of the year, but she was great to know. So then I know her neighborhood up to around Riverside Terrace is gonna miss her also, so we will have a, need appointment for a historic district commission member. And Bill, back to Bill, and we also need an executive session for high steps in Satterfield Court in a police matter.
Okay, under ten dash five oh eight of the Editated Code of the State of Maryland, I request an executive session following this meeting.
Is there a second on this?
I would think you'd have that memorized after thirty years.
Maybe I do, but I don't want to leave any words out.
Remember Jim Bristol used to do it? He used to do it till he, he.
Until he couldn't do it.
Okay, so Bill, we got that piece done.
So on Friday, we opened the bids for the Gateway Park Engineering. There were seven or eight bids. They were as follows. DMS and Associates from Centerville, $15,035. Landmark Science and Engineering and Havant Degrees, $29,600. Landscape Architectural Services LLC, $25,000. KCI Technologies, Inc., $21,000. McCrone, Inc. of Centerville, $8,540. Remington Vernick and Beach Engineers of Newark, Delaware, $24,962. Unity Landscape and Design of Churchill Road, Churchill, Maryland, $23,595.75. I had Case check out all the bids and the low bidder, especially McCrone, who's done work for us before, and they met all the requirements of the bid. The bid, we had $9,000 in the grant from community parks and playgrounds.
I would move we accept the bid from McCrone.
Okay, there's.
Not only is it the lowest, but they happen to be local, so.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we've got a second one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's the end of my report.
As you know, and my report's done too. So we go to ward reports. Mabel, how you doing?
I'm doing fine. Thank you. I double-checked to be sure it was all right for me to make an announcement that I have filed for reelection to represent the third ward of Chestertown for one more term. And while you're out politicking, believe me, you get a list about that long of what people would like to have done that goes along with the territory.
Always.
So that list goes to Mr. Ingersoll. I don't bore everyone with things like parking in front of fire hydrants, which everybody should know is against the law, and some little things like that that we need to clean up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mabel. Marty?
I can't do a whole meeting without mentioning, we're having a ribbon cutting for the dog park this Saturday at 11 o'clock. You don't even have to own a dog. It'd be nice if you just come.
I think we should all be there.
But you can either bring your dog or not bring your dog, but.
Okay, bring my cat, huh?
We'd like to have a few people show up.
Sure you can.
Let me tell you a story about it, though. I go there a couple of times a day and I meet new people a lot, but I met some gentleman the other day and his wife, and they had a dog. And we got talking about the dog park. And he was visiting this area from upstate New York. And I said, you know, I don't, his wife said this, "I don't think we would have came here if I wouldn't have found out you had a dog park." So it not only draws Kennedyville and Galena and Millington and Rock Hall, but it draws all the way from upstate New York.
That's good. Love it.
I think, they may have been staying on a boat. I didn't ask them, but they had a car, so maybe not. They had a pretty nice dog.
Yeah.
Now, this next, this next subject, I'm probably the best person to speak to this since this coming election. I'm the only person sitting here tonight that's not affected in some way in the coming election, including the mayor who's not even running, so that's why it doesn't affect her. The rest of them are affected. I noticed that we have seven people running for mayor. And this, I think, when you look at this, somebody could win with less than 25% of the vote, 20% of the vote of the populace. What I'd like to see, and we can't do it this time, but we certainly can look at it, if anytime more than four people file for an office, and we all run unaffiliated, so we don't have the Republican, Democrat, Green Party and all that other thing back to narrow it down, if we have more than four people, if we have an election and if you don't garner 50% of the vote, then we have a runoff with the last, with the two highest people. Now, it doesn't always happen. I had four people run against me the first time. I was fortunate enough to get more votes than all the other three people put together. So you wouldn't have a runoff in that case. Maybe in Mabel's case, you know, well, you didn't have four, you only have three this time. I think four is probably a magic number.
I have two, as far as I know.
I know we're all equal when it comes to votes, sitting up here tonight, but everybody knows the mayor is a little more than equal than equal. And it would be hard to govern effectively, I think, if you're only in there with 20% of the vote of the populace.
That's an interesting point.
It would be expensive, but it would also be the right thing to do. So I think for the next election, we should certainly look at that. And by the way, if I run, it would be the next election, so I would be affected by that.
I had the very same thing on my list, on the townwide announcements, that we address, I think it's a charter amendment, if I'm not mistaken, but provide for, if somebody doesn't get 40% of the vote, let's say, instead of numbers, 40% of the vote, there must be a runoff election.
Well, I think 50%. They ought to have more than the majority.
Well, that's arbitrary. I'm just saying, the concept is there that you want, you want more than just 20% or 25% of people a vote. So I think that we, that should be looked at, put into the, up for charter amendment and amended, and maybe go back to what Bill's been arguing for the last five years or so about organizing the election with the state. I know the state does not want to do that.
Absolutely. Half the people in town don't even know there's an election unless we, you know, so I think.
I think the state fights us because they don't want to do the work from wrong.
I've been trying for 20 years and the state doesn't really support you on that.
I know, but.
So you're basically asking for a primary.
That's what it sounds like.
Not a primary. We're really unaffiliated.
I know, but still.
By the way, it is.
It's basically a primary if you have two elects.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to look at, several things after this election. One, we need to look at redoing the lines, because we have, third ward has a thousand some people, another ward has 500, and that, those lines are.
No ward has as few as 500, but.
But no, not a few. But, you know, it's, things are kind of skewed when you look at some of these lines. So I think you need to look at that issue. And you can discuss the issue. Marty brought up.
I told Mabel I'd take some of hers, she wouldn't give it to me.
I would, I what?
I told you I'd take some of yours and you said no.
So this is a really important issue we need to discuss after the election.
Can I bring up one other thing? The board of supervisors of elections, and you picked another good group, they're three fine people.
Excellent.
They started wrestling with the idea on Friday of what happens if there's a tie. And guess what? A lot of communities have it in their charter, what happens when there's a tie.
And there's nothing in ours?
Not flipping a coin.
Rock Hall, they flip coins, yeah.
No, no. But some of them aren't clear. They'll say, in case of a tie, there's a runoff election, but they don't say how many of the people that ran. Others say, in case of a tie, the two who tied, or the ones who tied are the, are in the runoff election. So you have to make it clear, whatever you do, whether it's talking about 50% or 40%, if you're going to do a charter change, do it right the first time.
Yes.
And the research of the wards and that, that's important too. It has a lot to do with potential to register, how many registered, raise, everything. You know, when you move those lines, make sure you're looking at the future and you get a blue ribbon panel of people who don't have a vested interest in moving the lines to move them. So you don't have to keep moving them every, redistricting is hard, you don't want to disenfranchise elected officials. In reading these other charters, I thought it was very interesting, some cities have all their candidates run at large, and the first five, you know, vote getters are, win the seats.
Yeah.
That's pretty novel. That way, everyone's voting for you, so.
Cecil's, is Cecil at large?
Some of the western shore do that.
And the Queen Anne's?
It's very interesting. Wards, I think, are important though, for support of the people and people having, communicating with their elected official. But in reading it, I thought, wow, you know, you really got to go.
We're getting a little big for that, though.
I know, but when you make charter changes, you have to, you have to think it out.
Really research it, really care about it.
The point, I think the point.
It's a good point.
The person could win with 65 votes in this, in this marital election. And the other, rest of the people might think, my God, I couldn't, I don't want that person in there.
Yeah. The point here is that it's time to adjust our charter to, you know, we're fortunate we've got all these people running for office, okay? Some communities can't get enough to, you know.
No, I agree with you. I think it's great to do that many people.
But at the same time, we've got to be prepared for a situation where we've got seven, we could literally have 22% or so of the people getting the mayor elected. So I think that what we should do is indicate that we are going to address this with either special meetings with us or a special committee that looks at it and gives us their response now or before the election. But we know these are problems. This election brought it up. Let's look at solutions before the next election.
Okay. Something has to be done. Okay, Marty, you done, honey?
That's it.
Okay. Linda?
Okay. First of all, we never made it public that Piranha Sports LLC gave a donation to the police department and to the town for the Dragon Fly Heart Triathlon, which is very, very nice of them.
Excellent.
And then WCTR has the Dollar Saver Deal of the Week, which all the restaurants are participating. And the very first week, I think that they sold out in like 15 minutes. If you want a coupon for, well, actually, it was Uncle Charlie's Bistro was the first week, so it's kind of like Groupon, so you can go on and get a coupon for a $40 dinner for $20. And they've limited the number of coupons, and that has really been a big hit for our restaurants. Now, because we're playing ping pong on a situation here with a complaint of campaign signs in the gardens, in the gardens around the trees on High Street, public property.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, what?
Well, everything I said in my email, I'll say right here. I'll say it right here. There's been a complaint filed by an individual downtown.
One complaint.
That people are putting, people running for office are putting their election stuff in, around the trees downtown.
In front of the business that they run.
So we have never, in the, in the period before the election, we had never yanked people's.
No. That comment comes back. We're not talking about the planners, we're talking about the gardens around the trees.
Right, 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 right. I mean, people were just randomly putting them anywhere.
The tree wells.
You can't do that.
Okay. Can I, can I finish?
I thought I was talking.
Bill was talking. Too many women.
My lips weren't even moving, were they?
That's the way it is when you've got women in the room.
I got misconstrued in the email, so I want to get back on track.
All I want to say is, is I had one individual ask me, could he do it? Because it was already rampant up and down the street. And I said, well, we've never really ever pulled up anybody's campaign stuff unless it's flagrantly bad. So I've recommended to council, because it's not specifically covered in anything I have, and I don't want to violate anybody's First Amendment rights, you tell me what you want me to do and I will do it. If you don't, if, the theory is that people are sticking things in the tree wells downtown and that's town property, we'll pull them all up if you direct me to do it.
You want to be careful. I've saw a couple of your signs that are in public property too, so.
They're talking about the tree wells downtown.
I think it has to come from the council, though.
Yeah, this is where it starts getting tricky, because someone says, well, I got one over here, and somebody else put the one on the state highway right away. Oh, can we just leave it be until after the election?
Well, the procedure that somebody taught me way back when is that you, first of all, stay within your ward if you're running for, as candidate.
But there's no rule about that.
Or award.
There's no rule about that.
All right, well, somebody made the rule.
The unwritten rule.
It's unwritten. But it's not a rule.
And that you get permission, you just don't walk along the street and stick a sign anywhere you want.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, there's some fine lines that I see in my ward of some of those who are running for mayor, not council, but mayor, where they edge in between a town property and a private property, but, you know, it's pretty tricky. Actually, they're on town property, which is, as far as I've been taught, something that you're not allowed to do as a candidate.
And you're talking about something in the older section of town when there's very little space between the house.
The complaint was the gardens around the trees on High Street. It's focused on the gardens around the trees on High, that was the complaint.
I know, that's what the complaint was. Okay, the state highway.
For the concern.
The state highway administration says, no political signs in the state right away.
Absolutely.
On state-owned property, period.
Absolutely.
Okay. And as we all know, that's violated regularly, but it's unknown as to they come by regularly and rip them out.
They always have.
So do we adopt a policy that.
Go ahead.
There is, there are no signs on public, town public property, period.
Okay, and I understand, but there is also, as Mabel said, there is a narrow line where you have some situations, there's just a little space here.
These are definitely on town, town mainland properties.
If it's on big town property.
It's right in the road easement. But I think if you, if you vote that way, I think it ought to be done gently, that they ought to be asked to remove them and, you know, put them somewhere else.
Well, we just gently ask them to remove them right now. And then you can all set a policy with all these other election things at a certain point. So right now, just removing them from the tree wells downtown, and they stay off of state highway property, which.
Town property too.
Well, town property, but sometimes there's a little arrow.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You know.
There's, there's.
There's medians.
There's, there's town-owned property everywhere. There's medians, strips that you see between the sidewalk and the curb.
Between the sidewalk and the street.
But to me, that's different. Property owner mows it every week.
They mow it, they take care of it, yeah.
And they're regularly placed there. I don't see any issue with it.
I don't either.
With this, I, when I was asked about this, I went, geez, I don't ever remember this being done. But, you know, it is, because they're, they're cheaper and they're flimsier and, you know, you can stick them in.
And then the old wood states, they used to have.
And even if it's there for a short period of time. But I definitely think it's a mayor and council issue. It's not for Bill Ingersoll to go out and say.
So let's say we keep them out, and we're not talking about the little strip in front of someone's house, because, unless it's state property. On 213, that is state property. So say on High Street or some of these little side streets, there's this little bit of grass that the homeowner maintains. Is that okay with you? A median.
Yeah, but they're only talking about the gardens around the trees.
So we're going to say the gardens around the street are town-owned property, and so they're.
I'm addressing a concern.
And we will have the property owner, I mean, not the property, the people who put the signs, they remove them from the tree wells and other, any other obvious town-owned property. I don't know how to put it.
Well, parks.
Parks, yeah, parks.
If you saw them in the Fountain Park, you'd say, wait a minute, you'd get them out of there.
Get them out there, yeah.
Okay, so the thing is, well, no, but that's the hyperbole.
But even though the strips may belong to the town on High Street, that's okay, because the homeowner's maintaining those. So, tree wells, town-owned property, how's that?
Please, please remove.
Please remove, we will gently ask them to remove. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to that.
Second, second on that motion.
Is there any for me to second?
Yes.
Sure.
I mean, who?
As long as you get it down.
What do you do, second it?
I'd rather you second, because you're not on it for all.
You can stand up there and holler it, man.
No, 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 you please.
Mayor, I think that's a solution, is the tree wells downtown and the parks, and the people who currently have signs will be asked to remove them.
Gently to remove the tree wells.
And from this point on, the policy is-
That's right. I think that's an easy way, since we have a candidate here, let me ask you, you have a question?
If you feel your own purpose, if you don't ask people in their property if you can put a sign up, boy.
Yeah.
That's what I do.
As a candidate and a downtown owner who has a grass yard, my front yard, I want to be clear that when I speak to anyone who's working with me or anyone who's working with a candidate, downtown tree wells, planters in their, in front of their businesses, because there's some businesses that just have planters in front of their businesses?
I think it was in a planter, if they owned that planter.
Same thing, same, no, same things where a tree was? Are you talking about?
No, no, a pot in front of their shop.
Okay.
I didn't-
What did you mean?
So that's what I mean, some of the pots in front of the business. And then, you're addressing any town-owned property, and then, and that's any easements, any state, any state easements on the side of the road that are not-
In through here, Cross Street Estate, mainly state highway through here.
Right.
They get really annoyed with that one.
Any state or county highway, anything that's not, anything that's basically not personal private property, you've asked the homeowner that you can put in there.
Sure. Let's say the flower pots are fine, it's private property.
Not the boxwood.
Not the boxwood, no, that's not, that was not the shop owner's pot.
Right.
I told this is going to get you.
Mayor, is that equivalent to pot pots that are on the town sidewalks?
No, I, look, if anybody would listen to me, the gardens around the trees on High Street and Cross Street, that was the concern.
And that's why we don't care.
I'm not bringing up any state highways, federal highways, highways to know where.
Okay. We solved that problem. That could be prohibited.
Did we vote?
I don't know. I know what I'm voting on.
You're still talking, so listen to us.
I promise you, I won't put any of my signs up anyplace.
Good. Okay, the motion is to get the thing out of flower pots. No.
I didn't say anything about it.
You didn't, I had to say it. We do not want political signs in the tree wells downtown or any other town-owned property. However, if you've got a flower pot in front of your house, put a sign there.
And state easements, any state-
Oh, state-
Well, state of supersede is anyway.
Yeah, state supersede.
But I, as a candidate, I've seen a lot of that.
And they shouldn't be there.
I don't know who's, is to enforce that, I don't know where to go with that.
State highway, you call them. They'll take them out, they've taken them out before.
They're pulling them out.
Oh, yeah, they pulled them out before.
I don't want this to be one of them.
I wonder what we're doing.
That sign never conventionally-
That's it.
That's it. Okay, do we have a second on anything?
Yes, I have a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor? All, you're done with it?
Bye. Okay.
Okay, Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. The first is, the college is, I understand it's going to do a survey of their students about why they chose, or why they didn't choose Washington College. And if it's in their purview, maybe we could write on that item about, what did they think of Chestertown, was Chestertown involved in that decision-making?
You have to ask them.
And then, well, and the second one is actually a more important item, is that when, again, if the college agrees here, okay, this is an exceptional opportunity for us to market the town. If, when the college sends out their acceptance of the student, we have a specially-designed brochure to go to the parents and that student that talks about Chestertown. Now, it would be the colleges, we'd be writing on the college's shirttail, and they've got to give approval of this, but it would be a brochure promoting Chestertown as a nice place to be, from the eyes of a student coming here, and from the parents who will be moving, your kid being in town. It could talk about the hospital, it could talk about the downtown, but it would be a very important marketing tool for us to begin to address the residents. And, you know, this is a marketing dream, we got a list of targeted, interested people mailing, but it all depends on whether the college wants to participate with us.
Well, I think there has to be a conversation with public relations and the president of the college first.
That's why I'm bringing this up. I think it should be, and it should be a professionally, if they agree, we should do it in conjunction with them, our brochure being our cost, but being, but being a professionally-designed brochure targeting, not just some haphazard piece.
Well, I think, you know, it's have to have the conversation first, and then see about the cost, because this can be costly, but it may be worth it.
But I think, the idea is, we've gone from a hundred years without doing this, but I think it's possible that we could benefit both sides of the coin, the college and us, if it's done appropriately, and again, with the approval of the college.
Okay.
And how many came here for the dog park? That's what I wanted to know.
Probably more than you think.
More than you, I know one kid who came here for a horse, for a big horse.
They'll be beating them down the doors, Joe.
I didn't want to get your trees.
The second thing is, we've got the secretary's trip coming up, visit. I think we should have a list of important questions that are going to be asked to him, and the answers we're seeking. You know, it's, we, it's not often you get this level of guy spending two hours here.
Oh, I know, we've had it before, and we've always been well-prepared.
Okay, I just, I think we should be asking, no, I think we should spend some time in listing the questions we should be asking.
My best time?
Can you decide which day?
No, I got some-
Fifteenth. Fifteenth, gotta be fifteenth.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you saying definitely?
Fifteenth.
I'm trying.
October.
Before, it was definite, and then the secretary canceled on us, so-
This is Secretary Gill come to look at them, the waterfront, to see about getting their interest and possible funding.
So I'll send the email out tomorrow, the group email, where we try to do this again.
And I talked, I mentioned to Secretary Gill when I was with him, oh, at the Sustainability Summit, and they're very good at this, they really like these trips. It gives them a view from-
Can I bring a check, will you?
Oh, well, the budget's going to be worked on, it's coming up soon, so I think it's going to be an interesting trip, especially with Washington College being so helpful.
Yeah, okay. I think that's key to we participate in that. Two other items. One is, when we modified the hours for the parking meters, we suggested that we get some new time stickers, and Bill said that they're on air. Well, I looked, there's a lot of them on air, but all of them show the old times. I looked on the internet, we should buy some stick-ems and stick them on the parking meter to let people know what the new times are.
Okay.
Anyway, that's it for now.
Thank you. Anybody out there? I knew you were here, you shouldn't stay.
No, ma'am.
Good evening, Mark.
I couldn't stay for the whole meeting, other than I had some things that I needed to touch base on. And since you were talking about all these other wonderful issues, I thought I'd give you some insight. You all are following, because I saw the paperwork come through the, somewhere in one of my travels in the past couple of weeks, and there are state, very stringent state guidelines having to do with sign witnesses for campaign signs. So I would just urge to look in that packet, there are very explicit directions regarding campaign signage throughout the community, and that would be something that I would also urge you to put into your study group for your review of future elections. I also found it kind of interesting that we're sitting here with, what, twelve candidates running for office, and there's four here. If I was really a diehard candidate for a town position, whether it's mayor or ward or council seat, I think I would be attending meetings to find out what's going on in the town meetings a little bit prior to, you know, we're one meeting away from the really major election. If you had decided to retire, we wouldn't have all of this problem, not in there.
Last time, it was just a, it was just a quiet, little sleepy town four years ago.
But put that on your list, Mr. Ingersoll, Town Manager, that the study group should also look at your sign, sign witnesses regarding campaign signs.
Sure.
Because the other issue's going to come back at you. Well, wait a minute, I put the flowers in that bed in front of my store, why can't I put a sign in the bed? I'm paying the rent here, you know, I know what that will recreate. Anyway, this came from a fire meeting. You all see the sign on the front of the firehouse? It's the first time in the hundred and five-year history of the fire department we've ever had to put a help wanted sign out front. So I wanted to take the opportunity, since this has been reported, to put the word out. The fire company is desperately seeking people that are willing to volunteer. What does that entail? Well, initially, it entails about a hundred and fifty hours of universal firemanship one that you must take, as soon as it's conveniently available, it's part of our constitutional laws, but you must have that universal course under your belt, a ladder truck. And as you all know, in every organization today, it's very difficult to attract new members, and then say, oh, okay, well, now you've got to go take a hundred and fifty hours of training. The rescue squad's probably dealing with the same exact issue, because, as you know, our calls have increased several hundred a year, because we're assisting on emergency calls to assist the rescue squad, which we're glad to do. But in that vein, the ladder truck is twenty-five years old. There's been a committee that's been working for the last six months, over four hundred man-hours have been contributed to working, and we just finished approving the proposal to send to the board. But the same ladder truck that you see sitting there, twenty-five years old, that replaced the snorkel that was thirty years old, and the state recommendations from the hierarchy that control all of our departments. Now, you are supposed to turn these pieces of equipment over in twenty-five years, but a new ladder truck, I'm glad you're sitting down, one point two million dollars, okay? Now, that's cheap, when you figure, if you had to pay the man-hours that you've got to tag-
Oh, yeah.
-to run a fire department in a small community. This is, I'm in two, I have late membership luckily, in two fire departments as well. Same thing as Smart of Delaware, they're running into the same issues that we run into here, getting the volunteers. Smart is a little odd, because they have such a large body that, they're the only fire company I've ever seen in any, either state, in thirty-eight years of fire service, that has a waiting list for new membership. But they are the oddball, because of their morale, what they do in the department for their members, and they're the state champions of thirty-two years and all that stuff. But they're the oddball in their state. It's very difficult to get new members, and then to say, you've got to go get a hundred and fifty hours of training to be able to ride a fire truck. But that is something you need to be aware of. We met with Mr. DeMoyd, Mr. Ingersoll, that I would sort of want the council to know that we have had a team of the active fire chief and assistant chief, and met myself as the liaison for the chief, as his public information officer. Met with Keith and sat here for a good period of time several months ago, and had gone over a list of things, such as hydrant maintenance and color painting of hydrants. We have hydrants that have been out of service, the one on my corner, Garnet Elementary School, been out of service for a year. These things are really a problem. We pull up on the fire scene, and we don't have any communication back and forth with the necessary persons in the water department, so that we know that these hydrants are out of service.
Got you.
We had a call up at the mayor's house over a year ago. Got to that hydrant, the hydrant was out of service. They ran down to the next hydrant, the hydrant was out of service. You, you don't see the signs, because they're being hung on the other side of the hydrant, and we pull up, you pull your equipment off to hook to the hydrant, and all of a sudden, no water. You've got to go somewhere else to get water. We haven't had a problem yet, but we will have another McCorries type of fire someday, God forbid. We will have a major conflagration, and the finger's going to get pointed at the fire company, who's going to turn the ring finger back around when the community is upset because there isn't water sufficient to maintain it. But we better have a whole list with Keith, Mr. Ingersoll, and you can go over that list with him of things that need some attention. I'm trying to work with the chief to work with, and hopefully we can get a meeting with Mr. Sykes, and all of us sit down at the table.
Good idea.
There's personalities there that clashed from the beginning of time, and I'm trying to iron them out on behalf of the department and the town and the community, to make sure that we have sufficient communication back and forth for these issues. We've been talking about a dry hydrant at the foot of High Street for how many decades, Bill? Since the McCorries fire.
Since the McCorries fire.
And the dry hydrant is free, it's a matter of installing it. We should have them in multiple locations, for the Pantry Street, for the High Street, out by the water park. A dry hydrant is, it's very minimal cost, it's paid for by a program, and all it has to be is installed. And what does that mean? It means it's a pipe that just goes into the bottom of the river, or three quarters of the way down.